This is the Cortez City Council Work Session slash Special Meeting. Today is Tuesday, June twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-four, and the time is five fifteen P. M. I'd like to call this meeting to order, and we're gonna start with A on our agenda. Interview of four applicants for city boards and commissions. So we've got three applicant, or one applicant for the library board tonight, and three for the Parks and Recreation Board. So I'd like to invite Heidi Berger up here for the first interview. Welcome, Heidi. Okay, so we're gonna invite you to the podium here. We're gonna interview you. We've got a set of five questions, and we're just gonna go down the line asking them, and then we will be making a decision tonight in our regular meeting for the, for the library board. So just make sure your microphone's on green, and then we'll start with.
It's on.
Okay, and we'll start with Dennis with the questions. I'll just have to give this mic to him.
Hi.
Hi.
So what do you think is the role of the library in this community?
Well, I think all libraries, this community and any library, is a public space where the community can gather to share information. And in our community, we have a really diverse population that has a lot of different needs for information that the library tries to serve. And I think it does a pretty good job.
Hi, Heidi. So if selected, what is or what would be your greatest contribution to the library board?
I have a lot of energy. I am a creative thinker, but I'm also a strategic overview thinker. And that's something, and I can see the long view rather than just all the short term. These are, I think, assets that have helped me on other boards I've served in the past. And I love libraries.
Great, thanks, Heidi. Question three is, what do you see as the top two priorities for library service provision at the Cortez Public Library?
I think one of the things we need to do is figure out how to serve our no-fixed-abode population in a way that meets their needs without making general public uncomfortable, because you want the library to be accessible to everyone. So that's, and we have more of that population than, say, Mankas or Dolores because of our size and where we're located. So it is a, a big issue, I think, for the library. And how do you make it comfortable, you know, as well? And the other thing, I think, is that we need to find ways to improve some of our interlibrary loan services, because we have a limited collection, as any library does. But there are a lot of scholarly needs that our library can't meet, and if we had a better interlibrary loan system, those would be right on our deck in a, in a week.
Thanks, Heidi.
Sure.
If selected, what are or would be your goals as a library board member?
Well, I'd have to find out who all is on the library board and how I can best complement their strengths. I, I understand boards as advisory and guiding and not micromanaging. So I think one of the things I can bring, because I have a lot of board experience from being a board liaison for a higher education institution, I understand about not micromanaging, and I understand about how a board works in a way that keeps you in line.
Hi, Heidi.
Hi.
Would you please, how would, how would you raise public awareness for library services in Cortez and the surrounding community?
I have to say honestly, I haven't thought a lot about it. I think we could have a good monthly newsletter about what the library offers that goes out on Chuck's List and is on more than just Facebook. I'm a member also of the Dolores Library, and I really enjoy those newsletters. It tells me every extracurricular kind of activity that's going on. So I see that library as more of a general resource rather than just a book depository. I think our library can do that, too. Great. Actually, I have a sunflower troop meeting right after this, so.
Thank you, thank you for thinking of me. Okay, I'm loud, but not loud enough for the recording. Welcome, Kenneth. All right, so what we're gonna do is we've got six questions for you. We're just gonna run down the line asking them, and then we are gonna be making a decision tonight in our regular meeting for who, who's on the board, since we've got so much interest, more interest than there are seats. But really appreciate you being here and your interest in staying on the board. So I'm gonna pass the microphone to Councilmember Keefe Hoffer, and we'll start there and kinda go down the line.
Welcome, Mr. Quigley. Please share your background and interests relative to city parks and recreation, and please focus on what programs, services, or facilities that you're familiar with.
I have natural sciences education. Have a BS in Range Land Administration and a master's in land use and resource planning from Texas Tech University in a previous century, literally. And so some time ago. Came to Cortez eight years ago, had an interest in the parks. A lot of my involvement over the years had been with the Boy Scouts, and I had developed nature interpretive programs with the scouting movement at both the unit and the council levels. Found an opening on the board shortly after we moved here, and I thought, wow, that would be really interesting, so I applied. I do have a, a passion for the planning aspects of the, of the Parks Department. Would like to assist Creighton in revamping the ten-year master plan that was last completed in two thousand and sixteen, clearly much in need of an update. I brought my notes here, Creighton's last presentation from what has been completed for the ten-year master plan. I have highlighted a number of things that I think that we should focus on. I'm not sure that that's the, the, the object of this meeting, so I will forego those. But if there are any further questions on the thoughts and priorities, we'd be able to provide those.
In your opinion, what are the greatest strengths of the Cortez Parks and Rec system?
The greatest strengths?
Strengths, yes.
Gosh, obviously, it's infrastructure. I think we would all agree for the size of our community that we have incredible Parks and Recreation System and infrastructure. The rec center here is unparalleled. We have a rec center that's clearly on par with the rec center in Durango, which was obviously clearly much more well-funded than ours. So I think we're really fortunate. The landmass, just the, the beauty of the parks themselves, working with a slim staff. I think Lyle has done a tremendous job of maintaining these parks and keeping the infrastructure updated. Infrastructure clearly being one of the major concerns of the, the Parks Board and the Parks Department right now. We all know the, the failings of the last year and a half, infrastructureally, and we're, we're trying to address those.
Kenneth, what are the challenges that you desire to see improved?
Challenges that I desire to seek to improve? Okay, number one, that's referred to my notes here now. We, we, on the ten-year plan in two thousand and sixteen, creating the park at the old high school site was number one, had the most interest. That, that, the entire city and the Parks Board, you know, Creighton are clearly pursuing with the completion of the two thousand and twenty-three housing study. Now, that's, well, been on hold for a number of reasons, but also to incorporate the needs of the housing. So we're working on that now clearly to see where we're going from here, how much of the acreage is going to be devoted to housing, what the nature of that housing will be, although the Parks Department is not clearly involved in the selection of the housing types there. It clearly has a role in how much of the park property is going to be devoted to such cause. I'll just, other priorities on the ten-year plan were expand the city's paved trails system. That's a goal we would all like to pursue, maybe not a priority right now. The South Park development is clearly a priority. We need to keep moving on that. I think what's moved into the number-one spot here the last, particularly the last year, our infrastructural needs, particularly with the rec center and the outdoor pool. We are quite aware that those, the outdoor pool in particular operates at a deficit, but is something that's much treasured in any community. But we have serious needs infrastructurally. I don't think in two thousand and sixteen, when the master plan was completed, that we had a clear understanding of what the upcoming infrastructural maintenance needs were going to be. And clearly, we're there now with the rec center and the outdoor pool. So I think that has moved to the number-one priority. We've got to address those to, to, to fund those infrastructural maintenance and improvement needs, and, and also to relieve Creighton of being only a firefighter. He's, he's been quite busy just putting out fires since, almost since he got here. So the pickleball courts, they're doing well, obviously in need of expansion there. South softball complex renovation, the, the new lights have gone in, thanks to Empire and others. That's probably a little down the road, too. We need to get a youth football facility determined, location determined and established firmly. There are other, many other things, a veterans' park restroom removal, the replacement of the Park de Vida pavilion electrical box, if that's not been done yet. That was quite a sad situation with the vandalism. And I am also on the, the Subcommittee for Forestry within the Parks and Recreation Board. Clearly, we're, we're sad that we do not have a city forester at the moment, so we would, we would like to see that effort renewed and hire another city forester and, and an assistant for that person.
Thank you. Have you been engaged in other community-based organizations? If so, please share your experience with us, and that can be here or in a past life.
Community-based organizations? Well, clearly, it's been a virtually a lifetime involvement in scouting, a registered scouter for fifty-four consecutive years. That has kind of fallen by the wayside since I retired here, not gotten re-involved with scouting. I have been involved extensively with Habitat for Humanity. I was a volunteer there, been an integral part of the, the Upcycle Art Show and Auction that's been held every year now for four years. I was a Visit with Respect Ambassador with Friends of Cedar Mesa in Utah until I went down with a back injury about three years ago, and that's rather fallen off.
Okay, great. What is or would be your greatest contribution to the Parks and Rec as a Par, Par Fab member?
My greatest contribution? I, I think, I think I have an understanding of the needs. I, I can, having a background in resource planning, I can, I can, I think, clearly understand the needs of the Parks and Recreation System. I, I don't have any concrete things. The next person coming up, oh, good, he's here, Alan's here. The gentleman coming up has incredible background in mostly economic development, and he's got some real tools for economic development that I don't have. That's, that's not a strong point of mine. But I think I have a, a vision that can be attributable to the, the cause of the Parks Department.
Thank you, thank you for your answer. So what is your interest in, in continuing to serve as a Par Fab member? And what knowledge, skills, and abilities do you have that will help this board fulfill its mission?
I'm sorry, could you repeat the first part of the question?
Sure, so what's your interest in continuing to serve as a Par Fab member?
Okay, I, I have much enjoyed being a member of the board. I, I particularly enjoy working with the natural areas. I had worked with a botanist who produced the signage for the Carpenter area, Al Snyder, and also we, we produce signage for the Hawkins Preserve, and I helped with those, that signage there. I would like to continue working with the, the nature programs. I would like to be part of the vision of revamping the ten-year master plan and focusing on that, establishing new priorities.
Well, thank you very much.
All right, so those are the questions we've got for you. We're gonna be making a decision today in our regular meeting. And so if you, you can either stick around for that, or staff will let you know probably tonight or tomorrow.
Okay, all right.
Thank you for your interest and dedication.
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, next, we're interviewing Alan Klein, who is a current board member. Welcome, Alan. So we've got a set of six questions for you, and we're just gonna kinda as we interview you for this board. Start with Dennis, I just need.
Hi.
Hi, Dennis.
Please share your background and interest relative to city parks and recreation. Please focus on what services or facilities.
Well, I've lived in Cortez since eight. I was recruited here as the Economic Development Director for the Monozema County Economic Development Council. And in that capacity, I was very recruiting and helping businesses expand to create new jobs in the area. One of our foremost achievements was recruiting Osprey backpacks. And another one that I was visiting with Linda about was the fact that we also retained Walmart, who was being wooed by landowner on the east side of Cortez to move as they were getting ready to expand to that location. We worked aggressively to retain Walmart and the viability of the city at the time, because they were, and still are, the major component to the sales tax base. And fortunately, they did not leave the city. And the city was fairly aggressive with the Sligo Street expansion, other projects to make it very attractive for Walmart to stay in the city limits. We had a pretty aggressive program back in those days. But I've been involved with witnessing and using the facilities of all of our parks since I've been here. I can remember getting married up the river in Dolores, but we had a little reception in one of the city parks pavilions that blew down this year and is being rebuilt, and that was in nineteen ninety. That was before we even had Park de Vida or a rec center. I was very involved with the community and people like, I think Matt was around then, in getting the voters to pass the bond to fund the rec center on the second attempt. The first attempt was a failure. And we've watched and witnessed the rec center, and I use it on a regular basis. I'm a big lap swimmer, I've been swimming in the outdoor pool for thirty-five seasons, and I use the recreation center all the time. I used to be an active golfer and use the golf. I live on Denny Lake, so I get to live next to a city park, which I've been at for thirty-three years, and witness the evolution of that. And Chris Burkett was the recreation director back in those days, and he did a wonderful job of re-channeling that lake and making it a, a wildlife and bird sanctuary area. And it's pretty amazing, the water fowl that's attracted there. And I've been also on the Parks and Rec Board for the last four years and been very involved with the efforts to try to improve our park system.
Thank you. The greatest strengths of the Cortez Parks and Recreation System?
I would say the variety and the scale and the volume of, of open space that we have. I mean, technically, the Hawkins is not part of the city. It's, you know, owned by the cultural center. But when you take the Greer natural area at Carpenter Property and all of our park systems, we have, I'm sure, based on our acreages, one of the highest volumes of park acreages devoted to open space and protecting open space. Not that we feel like we're that crowded here in Cortez, but it's pretty amazing how we've created this beautiful environment. So even if there is rapid growth, which I've never seen since I've been here, it's not gonna overtake us, because we have a lot of land protected for parks and open space. And I think, I always joke about this, on a per capita basis, I would argue that Cortez has a world-class park systems, you know, because it's just phenomenal.
Thank you. What are the challenges that you desire to see improved?
The challenges?
Yeah, what are the challenges that you desire to see improved?
Okay, I would say one of the challenges is, you know, funding. Like, I was very involved with a consulting group that did a lot of input on, we called it South Park, the South Side Park. And we developed a really beautiful concept plan for that. And then, when it came to executions, the funds really weren't there, and there were some issues with grant funding that were problematic because of the delay in the audits. But essentially, we created, with all this beautiful public input, a law. And it's probably never gonna be implemented on that scale. So one of the challenges is, how can we still do a beautiful job with that park with a much smaller budget? And maybe at the same time, have a creative housing development component, which they're working on, on a portion of that land. And the other big challenge is, is maintaining the funding necessary to keep what we've got operating well. Like right now, the rec center is going through a lot of major mechanical systems because of its age, it's right at twenty-five years, and a lot of things are failing. And financially, I think, we just need to figure out the best way to make it stable and strong and going forward.
Have you been engaged in other community-based organizations? If so, please share your experience with us.
Okay. I'm very active in Mankas Trails Group, and we're based in Mankas, but many of us are residents in Cortez and nearby areas. And that's a group that's committed to developing and maintaining new trails, single track for both equestrian hiking and mountain biking use. I've also previously served on planning and zoning for the city of Cortez, and of course, worked very closely in my previous work as the Economic Development Director with the entire city staff back in those days. And those are the significant ones.
Alan, what has been your greatest contribution as a Parks and Recreation Forestry Advisory member?
I think my greatest contribution is somebody who's been here a long time and has seen the changes and evolution, and is a user of the Recreation Center and its programs. And, you know, I've been using, like, the exercise programs that go on at the rec center since it was opened, since it was created. And so I've seen, like, at one time, we had a lot of. And so I've seen like, at one time, we had a lot of exercise classes and opportunities. And then in COVID, a lot of that disappeared. So I've seen and experienced a lot of changes. And I've seen, you know, things do really well, like our golf course. It's done an amazing job at maintaining what I consider to be a, you know, for again, our city, our size, it's kind of a world-class golf course.
What is your, what is your interest in Parks and Recreation and Forest Advisory Board member? And what knowledge, skills or abilities do you have that will help, that will help this board fulfill its mission?
Towards what?
That will help the board fulfill its mission. What knowledge, skills and ability?
Well, I have a pretty rich public sector background. You know, prior to doing economic development work here, I was involved in city government and had nineteen years in the public sector. So I have a lot of experience and expertise in what local governments can do in terms of enriching the lives of its residents and making their recreation opportunities a lot better. And I think as a user and somebody who's seen the evolution of everything in our area for thirty-five years, I can offer a lot of sage advice, you know. Unfortunately, as you get really old, occasionally you stumble on some wisdom. And so I'd like to share that.
Thank you. That's all we have in terms of questions. Thank you, Alan.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah. All right. Well, then we've got one more. Julia Buff. Hi Julia. Thanks for your interest in the board. So we've got a set of questions for you that we'll, we'll ask. And then we will be making a decision tonight on the board during our regular meeting. So you're welcome to either stick around or staff will reach out to you pretty soon to let you know what our decision is. Okay, so I'm gonna get this microphone to Matt and we'll start there and just go down the line. Councilmember Keith Hoffer.
Welcome, Ms. Buff. Please share your background and interests relative to city parks and recreation and focus on what programs, services or facilities that you are familiar with.
My background in relation to the Parks and Board would be in relation to youth sports and activities and personal utilization. As a parent of the different park facilities located all throughout town, I think we've made it to pretty much every single one. And in relation to coordination with knowing most all of the presidents of the sports leagues through town and the different struggles and their finances and things like that and how that correlate to field usage or facility usage in correlation and coordination with the city. And did you also say my goals in that or what was the last part of the question?
Focus on the programs, services and facilities that you're familiar with.
Okay. In regards to the baseball fields, soccer fields, the parts of the park that are utilized for Devo, parts of the park that are utilized for school outings. I mean, you name it, I've probably been involved in it in some capacity with my children or the schools.
In your opinion, what are the greatest strengths of the Cortez Parks and Rec System?
I think that we have an park system. We have lots of parks scattered throughout our city, which is very unique. We, this beautiful chunk of land, the part of me behind me actually, destruction is amazing. I think that it's a very strong suit. I did learn that we have water access here, which is great. And we don't have water access on Seventh, which is unfortunate. But also the South Field Complex is awesome despite it needing some TLC. I think we have a lot of assets that could work in our favor. And I think with the right amount of coordination and collaboration between not only the city, but also through the leagues and grant funding that they have procured, better them beyond what they already are.
Okay. What are the challenges that you desire to see?
Greater increase in access to restrooms closer to these facilities that are utilized by children and their families. I think, I don't know if anyone in here has had kids that have to go to the bathroom when you're at the park and you gotta go five hundred yards, but you're two. The other thing I think is facilities such as restrooms or concessions, lights, all these things. And I know they're very expensive, but I think that there is funding out there and there are ways to find access to it. And again, I think that coordination and collaboration is key and having like an intermediary to help the people come together. But I think those improvement and maintenance of facilities is a really challenging item, yet an integral part of providing the things that our community needs access to in order to enjoy our parks fully.
Thank you.
Have you been engaged in other community organizations, community-based organizations throughout your life?
Yes. In my time here in Cortez, I've served on a handful of boards. Most recently, I'm on SEYC Board, which is the School Community Youth Collaborative. They do a lot of good things for the youth in the area and do utilize some of our facilities as a city. I've served on the Battle Rock School Board. I've also served on, not served, I've been advising the Cortez and so I'm usually trying to be an advisor to boards because I run my own business and don't have full time, but I'm actually discussing dropping a handful of boards to be on this board depending upon. I have questions for y'all too, but I don't know if this is the appropriate time to ask them, so we can.
Hi. What is or would be your greatest contribution as a ParFab member?
I think having that coordination and collaboration between the existing sports leagues who utilize and I know put a lot of wear on our facilities and our parks, but are one of the greatest things that the city has to offer. I know when we moved here thirteen and a half years ago, we saw what was happening in the parks and the huge volume of kids coming out for soccer and coming out and utilizing these amazing green spaces. And I'd like to see that continued and that are facilitated for the benefit of those youth so that we can continue that because it definitely is a draw for families and people to stay here and live here.
Thank you. So what is your interest in serving as a ParFab member? And what knowledge, skills and abilities do you have that will help this board fulfill its?
I feel that I'm good at bringing in other and connecting people with one another and know a lot of things that are happening in different sectors at the same time at coordination together to better serve the community. I'm also really good at keeping people on the right task and redirecting people when things get off topic in boards as they often do.
What, what was your questions for, if they're quick?
Yeah, I've lost, I have a handful. My questions are, what are the hours and commitments on the monthly basis? What are, what is the sphere of influence or what exactly as that board, what decisions do they make and how does that affect the ultimate decision-making? Do they review the finances? I did have a small conversation with Ken in the room. But I'm just curious as far as like how influential that board is in directing spending or delineation of funds towards certain things. Also curious, and he did kind of go over the master plan from 2016 and what updates and changes may be happening to that. Curious about your goals that are already set forth for funding. I've noticed around town, there's lots of little things happening like sidewalk improvements and just like, there's a lot of things happening already that are in motion that look awesome. And I'm not fully aware of all of those things. So I'm just, I don't want to like come in being like, oh, we need to do this and this without fully understanding what's already in motion and the time length of service.
Okay. The, the commitment is one meeting a month on the, yeah, here, I'm gonna give it to Matt because he is our representative for the Parks Board.
Ms. Buffett's one meeting a month. It's usually the first Thursday of the month. It's an hour and a half long. We try to keep to that time limit. And this is an advisory board. So in terms of making recommendations, in terms of, you know, funding programs and things like that, it's purely on an advisory basis. So there wouldn't be any sort of authority in decision-making, et cetera. In terms of the length of terms, Linda might help me with that. Two years? Is that correct? Parks and Rec? Two years.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
In terms of a master plan, it does need to be updated and that is something I'm assuming that Creighton will come to the budget meeting asking for, you know, but he's also, it's been kind of put on the back burner as all of our infrastructure is kind of failing around the rec center and the pools. So that's kind of been a priority of his, but once there's time and money for that, that is kind of next on the list to update. So, and then we do also have two volunteer board, two other volunteer board subcommittees for the Parks and Rec Board. There's the rec center one and then the forestry one or tree. Urban forest. Okay. All right. So we will be making a decision tonight in our meeting. We'll let you know. But thank you for your interest.
Thank you. Thank you for your time. Do you want me to turn this off?
Yes, thank you. Make sure it's red. Okay. We're gonna move on to be on our agenda. A joint work session with the Planning and Zoning Commission and City Council on the draft land use code. So council is gonna move down to the tables and we invite the Planning and Zoning Board to join us. All right. Sorry that took up a good portion of our time with you guys, but we appreciate you being here and look forward to kind of the updates and edits you have to present to us. Okay. And thank you Planning and Zoning for joining us tonight. Yep, that looks like it's working. All right. Good evening, everybody. Thanks for having us back. We've been putting quite a bit of work into your code over the last few months and figured it was time for a good update on what we've been working on and to give you guys an opportunity to weigh in on anything that you're seeing in the drafts that are out for review currently. So I'll, I'll just very briefly go over the process like we always do, just to remind you of where we're at in the process. I'd like to open up for Module One, I'm gonna do a very short presentation, just kind of a recap of what we've done with, with Module One so far. And I really wanted to open up time for discussion on Module One, assuming that you guys have had a chance to at least kind of comb through the drafts that are available. And then if we do have time, we'd like to go into kind of a couple of topics on Module Two to get your feedback on. So we'll do a very short presentation. We'll have discussion on Module One, go back and do a little bit of a presentation on Module Two and get your feedback if we have time. So we definitely want to make sure we have time to discuss any of your questions or comments on Module One. So as you all know, we have drafted Module One. It's out for public review right now. And then we have been starting to draft Module Two in the background, just kind of having some meetings with our task force or advisory committee to kind of get some feedback on direction on a couple of items. And so historic preservation specifically, we met with the Historic Preservation Board and had a really great discussion on just some very minor tweaks to that section. So that one has actually been developed pretty, pretty far along the others. We're still waiting for feedback on our open houses tomorrow and some feedback from you all, so. For Module One, you'll remember there's two chapters that are part of Module One. Chapter One, which is your general provisions. And then Chapter Three is our zoning and use standards chapter. I believe last time we met with you all, we talked about Chapter One quite a bit. We talked about the non-conforming regulations. And from that discussion, we went back and tried to incorporate as much of the comments that we heard as possible. So just kind of some highlights for, for what we've done. We did remove that fifty percent assessed value threshold from the maintenance and repair provision. I think you'll remember it originally said fifty percent assessed value. We had talked about doing a fifty percent of the gross square footage. And then in our discussions, everyone kind of agreed that maybe the fifty percent wasn't necessary at all, that if we just need to be maintaining and repairing non-conforming buildings for safety, health, safety and welfare. So, so we did remove that provision. We've added an allowance for non-conforming structures to expand as long as they don't expand beyond the dimensional standards in the zone district. We simplified the reconstruction standards. That, that was one that we had quite a bit of discussion on, if you recall, where the current code speaks more to fire and natural hazards and oh, my mic just went out. Certain percentage of the building that can be reconstructed because of those, because of that damage. And we had all discussed as a group that maybe it was a little too nuanced to have, you know, something specific that if, if a building is destroyed by any means, that it can be reconstructed. So we recrafted that language to simplify based on our conversations. And then in the Oh, yeah. So I guess I just want to acknowledge to the public, I think that this kind of lessens the burden of having a non-conforming once this is adopted. Yes. Yeah. The other piece to that that we'll get into in Chapter Three is that a lot of the dimensional standards that we have proposed for adjustment are, a, a big portion of them are to make a lot of non-conforming structures conforming now. So, so we're really trying to reduce the burden, exactly like you said, on the non-conforming structures. So that's, that's primarily the changes that you will have seen since you last saw this draft on non-conformities. The enforcement section, we did dive into quite a bit. You'll, I hope you have seen that it's changed a lot. We, we did, your current code, I think, goes straight to a misdemeanor and there's some fines. We've simplified it and expanded it a bit in the proposed draft. So it simplifies it to primarily a civil offense, but we've given a whole list of remedies. So, because, because no, you know, not, no one enforcement is the same as the other or penalty or issue. So. because, because no, you know, not, no one enforcement is the same as the other or, or penalty or issue, so. Um, now when code enforcement goes out on site, if they see an issue, um, that, that is not in conformance with the code, there's a whole list of remedies, so if it's, if it's adequate for them to, you know, serve the letter and then, um, you know, serve a fine, then that's one path they can take. If, um, you know, if there's, there, there's a whole list of, of options. And one of them is still to go to the courts, so if, if they, you know, go through the process and it's just not getting resolved, there's still that option. But it's giving a lot of different options before you go to that final, um, step, so. Um, and then with the vested rights, very little has, um, been proposed for change in the vested property rights. Um, the biggest thing is that your current code states, uh, that, that vesting is a, is tied directly to final plats. Um, vesting can also be applied to site plans, there's some other plans that, that can have vested rights associated with them. So we just changed that language to, to be approved plans and, um, it's more of a policy on the backend, so. Um, hopefully that kind of helps clarify the vested property rights. Um, I think what I'd like to do is go through, I have like two more, two or three more slides and then we can kind of come back and have discussion if that's okay. Um, module, or, uh, chapter three. Um, I don't recall that we really got into a lot of detail in our discussions on chapter three in the past because I knew we focused a lot on chapter one. Uh, but I, I know we've talked about this before, um, that the biggest change with the zone districts is really a couple of naming conventions. So the manufactured home district, MH, right now includes a lot more than just manufactured homes. So we've, we've discussed in the past changing the name of that to R3 mixed residential, which, it, which covers a much more, much more closely what's already in that zone district. Um, and we didn't, it, it doesn't change the intent of the zone district at all, it's just really creating a better name for what's already there. Um, and then in the commercial highway zone district, not all of the properties in that zone district are, um, uh, have frontage on a highway, so we kept the, the letter C as the designation, but just dropped the highway. So it's just the, gen, basically a general commercial zone, so we're calling it commercial. And then the residential estate, uh, district, there's only, um, I believe two or three properties that are zoned residential estate. Uh, and I think half of them or more are owned actually by the city. So, uh, the discussion was to keep that zone district, make it a legacy zone district, which means, um, it can, the, the properties that are zoned RE can continue to operate as they are under all the same, uh, regulations, but no new property would be zoned RE. Um, and then the dimensional standards, um, we up, well, we updated the dimensional standards, uh, and I have a couple of slides on that, you'll see, um, we've prepared a comparison of the existing and proposed, um, and that's one of the big pieces of our open houses over the, over tomorrow. Uh, I almost said over the next couple of days, but, huh, tomorrow. Um, and then we have some new and updated uses. We did, um, try to fine tune and, um, can, not consolidate, but make more consistent that all of the residential dwelling uses. Just, there, there was a lot of, um, language in there that we, we just modernized and brought up to, up to standard and brought into conformance with the housing plan. One of those would be cottage courts, so we've added a new use for cottage courts, which are small clusters of dwellings. They can be single, um, household dwellings or they could be, um, you know, duplexes. Um, but it's intended for smaller parcels, so you might have one or two acre parcel that you could cluster, you know, three or four smaller homes on, um, and it creates, and we have some images on it, but it creates a little bit different, a different way to, um, get some missing middle housing in, into the palette. Um, so it's a new option that will be available. Um, your current code, you probably could still do a cottage court, it would just be under like a PUD, so we've just kind of developed some standards specific to a cottage court. Um, we've highlighted tiny homes and tiny houses. Um, the state, state of Colorado actually has some regulation on tiny homes and tiny houses, so we've included them as, um, a use with definition, so it's, it's much more clear where they can be utilized. We've expanded the outdoor storage and display uses, we spent quite a bit of time, um, making sure that, that we have a variety of uses with outdoor storage and display and I have another slide to kind of go over that in a little more detail. And then we've done a little bit of work with the industrial and manufacturing uses. Um, we've can, combined and condensed some uses and then com, um, expanded some uses to make it a little bit more clear, especially in industrial, that you can have kind of a light industrial type use or a heavy industrial type use. Um, and kind of, uh, updated the manufacturing uses a little as well. I almost said next slide, but I'm the one that has the, the mouse. Um, so I won't go into this in, in a lot of detail, but this is, um, like I said, what we have prepared as a comparison in the dimensional standards, so you'll see, um, like in the RE zone, pretty much everything stays exactly the same. So we aren't proposing any, any changes. Your current code does have in, in the dimensional standard tables, um, it goes on and on and on and on and on. And there's, um, you know, different dwelling types and different unit types for, for residential specifically. Um, and so part of what we were doing here is trying to condense and combine all of that to, to simplify it and make it a little bit easier for everybody to administer this portion of the code. Um, in the R1 zone district, we've tried to keep that one as well, very close to the existing zone district. Um, in our discussions with staff and our advisory committee, um, it's become clear that that zone is, is the one zone that everyone would really like to kind of maintain the current character and not tinker with too much. So we tried to keep that, um, as, as close to existing as possible. The one change you'll see is the minimum lot area drops to 6,000 square feet instead of seven. We did, I think we probably have talked to you guys about this before, but we did an analysis of the whole city. A lot of the R, current R1 properties were about 6,000 square feet, between six and that's 7,000 square feet. So that's where when I was talking about on the non-conformities, by dropping that minimum lot size, now all of those lots are no longer non-conforming lots, they are conforming lots, so that really helps out quite a bit, um, managing them, um, over time. So that's the biggest change, um, on R1. R2 and R3, you'll see, we, we've dropped the minimum lot size down from 6,000 square feet to 4,000 square feet. And in your current code, it's, it's a different lot size based on the unit type. So a single family dwelling can have a larger lot, duplex and then your attached or townhome units. It, it's a little bit harder to administer a code when you're looking at all these different lot sizes, so, um, we, we decided in, in a bunch of research and a lot of discussion, we've, um, have currently landed on 4,000 square feet. Um, and then you can, you know, you have a lot more variety and, and, um, variety in how you can lay out a site based on that. We have kept across the board, the rear, rear lot setbacks are the same, side yard setbacks are mostly the same. Um, you'll see we've dropped it to five feet in the R2 and R3, five feet is very standard across many codes, especially in a, in a little bit denser, um, zone district. Um, but we have kept 10 feet for multifamily, so any apartments or multifamily buildings would need to have a little bit more separation. That'll tie later to, um, potentially to landscape standards, uh, making sure there's space for buffering between uses. Probably the other big piece, we've added a residential density. Your current code, um, speaks to floor area and that was the one that went on and on and on and on and on with many different floor area types for different types of units. Um, and so kind of doing an analysis on those existing floor areas, uh, we've come up with some maximum densities for these, um, the R2 and R3 zone district. I think that is most of what we'd like to highlight. Um, the front yard setbacks also you'll see are currently 20 feet. What we're trying to do is encourage, um, you know, to, to, well, if you take, you take your lot size down, like we did, now we need to kind of do a little give and take with the setbacks, we've kept most of the setbacks the same. The give that we've given is on the front yard setback, so you can, the garage has to still stay at 20 feet, so you have the 20 feet, um, for driveway and parking a car and everything. But the front of, the front facade of the house, a porch or a front facade could bump into five feet into that, so it could be 15 feet from the, from the front yard. So that just gives a little bit more flexibility, um, on housing. And then with the commercial districts again, you'll see, um, we've added a residential density for the zone districts that allow residential uses, the C and the NB. Um, a lot of the, um, the CBD right now didn't have any setbacks listed, but there, there, it was intended to be kind of zero lot line development, so we've clarified that. And let's see, what else would I want to highlight in this one? Oh, the minimum, or the maximum lot coverage and we, we've, um, adjusted the maximum lot coverage both in residential and commercial. Um, and again, that's based on those lot sizes and just making sure that we're, um, being able to accommodate, uh, the types of uses that, um, are already kind of being contemplated in the code. I wanted to highlight these three new uses that we talked about, um, and you can see in that bottom picture, the cottage cluster. This is just one example of a cottage cluster. Typically they're oriented around kind of an open space, so rather than having individual, um, lots and individual driveways, you can have kind of a group parking area, you can have open space, um, you can utilize the site a little bit differently. Um, we've had some question from the public along the way and early in the process about, you know, tiny home communities or, or smaller lot development, um, this is, this is what a lot of communities are using to accommodate that type of use. So, um, that's not to say it would have to be tiny homes, it, it could be larger, larger than tiny homes, but, um, that's just one use. And then, um, wanted to just highlight the, um, outdoor storage and ex, we added an outdoor storage as an accessory use. We've added outdoor display standards to the general retail use. There were some outdoor display standards in your current code, um, for the CBD district and we've rolled those in and kind of expanded upon them a little bit. And then we've added a standalone outdoor sales and outdoor storage. In talking to staff, that was one of the biggest, um, I don't want to say issues, but questions that comes up a lot on commercial development is can, you know, where can I store, you know, outdoor storage? Let's say for example, Walmart wants to have, um, you know, they have a product that they're going to be storing somewhere, but they need to store it outside and we want it to be screened from view and kind of, you know, secure versus we want, they want to, you know, sell, say sheds or, or lawn mowers or something. So making sure that they're creating space for those, that's not impeding, uh, pedestrian or vehicular traffic um, and is, um, something they can kind of, you know, keep secure and, and things like that. So, so those are some of the things that we had heard from staff that they hear a lot on applications, so we spent quite a bit of time working through those outdoor storage and sales standards. So I'm going to pause here and I can go back to those first two slides. Um, were there any specific comments or questions on chapter one that you guys wanted to discuss tonight?
Uh, I just wanted to say I really liked how you incorporated our comment, especially with the enforcement. Um, I was, I really liked how that read and was happy with that.
Great, thank you. Well, and I'm still always trying to wrap my head around vested rights, but I think it's better to do approved plans because sometimes things don't have a plat, um, but that still can come into play, so.
Um, I, I appreciate the work you've done on kind of simplifying things, that's one of the issues in our current code is that it is not particularly readable to a normal person. So, um, I, I think that's really helpful for, particularly for those general provisions is that clarity and simplicity and, um, yeah, that's why, thank you.
And you know, and I do appreciate the work with, with non-conforming because I think there's a lot of properties that are currently non-conforming compared to our land use code and it inhibits them to, to do the things that they want to. Um, and I don't want to just continue that with a new land use code, so, uh, like, I think it's great that we're aiming towards kind of opening up the ability to, um, do the things you want and need to with your own property, so thanks for, um, keeping that in mind.
I know we're not quite there yet, but kind of to that end, can you, um, help me understand, uh, the percentage of lots currently in the city that are 6,000 square feet or less?
Yeah, we, I might have to answer that question again later, um, I know we did an analysis, um, I don't remember the number off the top of my head, so. It was quite a few. Um, it was, it was, I would say like 80% or more, it seemed like. Right. Right, yep.
Yeah, agreed, I think it's really important that, um, with that analysis, taking the, the data and what's actually happening on the ground in Cortez and making it usable in our land code and also where we want to go moving forward.
So I don't know if this is the right place or not, so I'll, I'll go ahead and jump in.
Just jump in, yeah. We can jump around a little too.
Okay, so this is my first time in here, but, um, the Cortez, under the land use code, right? Um, under the schedule of use regulations, um, you have bed and breakfast at the top and boarding or rooming house, like number two underneath that. I'm not sure how, we have a large, uh, a, a growing number of people who have their homes on sort of like a B and B site or, um, and so I'm kind of wondering where this fits in here because, uh, we don't have it under, we don't have it listed under R1 zoning district at all. And so I'm kind of wondering where, uh, I'm trying to catch up here and understand what
Sure. Can you pull up the existing code and see?
Page 18.
Yeah, I have the current code open, um, we're going to see how it compares to the existing code to see where we're at, yeah.
Awesome, thank you.
And if I may add a little bit to that, um, that question has come up a lot actually in our discussions with the public and, and amongst ourselves regarding, um, the management of, say, short-term rentals. And, um, we decided that we would set that particular discussion aside because it in and of itself will take, um, some work and some public outreach and, um, some discussions with council on how we should deal with that going forward, so. It's something that we're, it's definitely high on our list to address, um, once we get the other things underway.
Well, thanks for your input on that. Um, I think my, my, my only question is, is that if we, if we leave it out right now, do we have to go, is it going to be a work of effort when we do decide the path we're going to take to go back and put it in?
I guess if I, I can add, so I think, I think the difference is like a bed and breakfast and a boarding room is kind of like a, seen as like a commercial use, like a little hotel, like a version of a hotel. While long-term and short-term rentals, that's almost like separate from a, it's, it is a business, but it's, it's treated separately kind of right now. Um, so I think this is more kind of business-like, the bed and breakfast. Um, but you're right, the, that is a long, a longer discussion that, like, council member Keefe offer has brought up and that it's kind of on our list to talk about of regulating or like how we want to approach short-term rentals and the impact it has in our community while also letting people be able to make money with their own property.
Right, so we just don't even have that category in here anywhere that I'm seeing, right?
Correct, yeah.
So it's sort of like, to me, that's a, we, we should put, at least put the category in there so we could sort of figure out where we're going to fit it later on.
Uh, just like a little bit more background, when we were getting into this, um, process, um, you know, we, we did like the, the ADU regulations separately because we also thought like that was going to be a, a bigger discussion and, and something that needed to be handled separately. And like Rachel, um, March Banks just said, um, with the, uh, short-term rentals, like Airbnb's and, and the likes of that, um, it would be something that we have as a goal to, we've had as a goal to work on later, that would then be added to the code. But we felt it was, um, too big of an issue to tackle and successfully move forward with, um, a, a productive land use code.
Well, because I also think renting is not something we kind of regulate to specific zonings and that's kind of what it is, is like renting leasing is the difference. I don't know. Right, yeah.
So if I can jump in a little bit, what April is saying, I, I wholly agree with, however, we decided from the very beginning that if we had one issue that was going to bog the entire thing down, we need to skip over that issue and, uh, so that we wouldn't lose And so that we wouldn't lose everything that we're working on because we have this one issue. And that was the one issue we were talking about. And I, that was a good question that April had is how hard is it going to be for us to come back later and, and, and get it going? If we can have that answer, I think it'll.
So under the new structure, it will be very easy to add in later. So with the new table, it, it's all alphabetized. So it would just be a matter of putting it in that alphabetical order, short-term rental. And I would advise against putting it in now as, because we haven't figured out what zone districts. And there is, and the, the city does not have a license or any kind of process yet to manage short-term rentals. Because there's a whole nother set of standards that go along with short-term rentals. So the way that the new code structure is, it's very plug and play oriented. So as, I mean, you guys are going to have, codes are, are always evolving. So as soon as we, as soon as we get a new code in place, you're going to go, you know, we just had an application about this use and now we need to contemplate another one. So you'll be able to just plug and play it into the use table. And then in the next section where all the standards and definitions are, it's also alphabetized just right in the same order as the table. So you would be able to just go down and say, you know, short-term rentals goes here. Here's where all the standards will go. And it should be pretty easy to just plug it into the, the new location. Yeah. And I agree, it is a very important subject and, and that's why we've all said, you know, you know, acknowledged that and said, let's, let's parking lot that and get the rest of it moving forward. So thanks for bringing that up, April. Yeah, absolutely. Anything else on chapter one? Sounds like we're, we're getting a lot closer with chapter one. Okay. Chapter three, any, any questions, thoughts, comments, suggestions?
I, I do like the new, the new changes because I think you're right, commercial highways are a little deceiving. It's just all commercial. And then the manufactured home to mixed residential. Because, you know, I brought this up when we had an application to change to that zone that I can think, I think there's kind of a negative connotation around manufactured housing. And I think at this point, we have to think outside the box and be creative and. And accept all kinds of forms of housing to be able to meet the need and the costs. And so I like mixed residential because that's just more broad in general. And then I think like the legacy zoning, because I think there's like one actual property that's private that is that zone. So eventually as that changes owners and may change, like then that eventually can, that zone can go away.
I was glad to see some of the simplification, particularly around accessory structures, not, not just dwelling units, but structures in general. Our current code has some more maybe HOA type, type requirements about matching roof structures to the existing structure and things like that. I was glad to see that removed and simplified. I did have some questions on that. So in the dimensional requirements, we have, and I'm on page twenty-eight of, of a chapter three. So each accessory structure shall have a total square footage not to exceed 800 square feet or 33% of the total square footage of the principal structure. There's no, whichever is lesser or whichever is greater. So that, that was, what is the governing there, I guess would be my question. It's a I, item I under item B.
I feel like we'd want that to be whichever is smaller because we don't really want it above 800. Oh, there we go, okay. Yeah, I, it would be whichever is smaller.
And I just want to make sure that we clarify that in the code to make it, to make that clear that we are saying whichever is smaller, not, not you have a 800 square foot house and you could put in 800 square foot accessory.
Perfect.
The, the other question I had was about setbacks. I know because of, because of fire, obviously fire safety, we live in a fire rife area. We need to be, be careful about that. My question was about the possibility of extending rear setbacks, particularly in places where there's alleys. To me, I think you could maximize that by having that with alleys be either a small, the smallest possible setback or a zero setback to, to build a garage or, or a carport, rather than pushing that a further seven feet into, into lots.
I'm actually really glad you're bringing that up. It was a question I had tossed out a while ago, we needed to consider alley setbacks. So are there other folks that are interested in incorporating that? For the rear setbacks?
Yeah, I guess to, to clarify what Robert said is like decreasing the setbacks if there's an alley because we're not as worried as the proximity.
Yeah, and what I would recommend is right now, we have it as basically seven feet for all three of the residential zone districts. And I would say keep the seven feet for your principal structure. And we could go to either zero or, there's a couple of different ways we can do that. If it's, if it's a rear loaded garage, you still want to make sure you have room for a vehicle somewhere. But I think we could go to zero or even, you know, I've seen some codes go to two or three feet off the property line, just so they're not right on the property line in case you have garbage collection or anything else coming through that alley. Then there's just that little tiny bit of separation, so.
And I, I would just ask to include neighborhood business in that because it is, although it's in the commercial, it's basically a residential.
Yeah, I think about 80% of neighborhood business is homes. So I want to make sure that we're not trying to push that all to be business right away. Like that can transition over time, but I want to make sure that we don't make all of our houses, mine and Robert's included, on non-conformity.
I sort of feel like that the closest model that we have currently would be the rodeo subdivision. I think about the setbacks in the, with the alley in the backyard and in the front. And I'm kind of surprised that it doesn't, that it's, actually meets that standard. The, the front yards are really close. And I, I'm assuming that's from the edge of the Hell Strip, like where the street and the Hell Strip meet.
It's usually from the right-of-way line to the, to the structure. What, what was the subdivision again?
Rodeo subdivision.
Okay, that one might be a PUD as well. And in PUDs have a little bit more flexibility, so.
That, that would make sense. I'm just having a hard time wrapping my head around how we're not already there with that.
Right. Okay. Anyone else?
Yeah, I was just gonna, I think that's a good point, Robert, with that, with the alleys. I think that could be a reduced setback towards the alley. Wouldn't want things built like right up against the alley for reasons. And to keep traffic safe because some of people drive down the alleys.
Any other questions on chapter three?
Are we going to go over like kind of the updated industrial manufacturing uses?
We can go over it in a little bit more detail if you'd like to kind of hear the differences. Okay, can you pull up the existing code and then we can do a little comparison? And Michaela might remember a little bit better too, so. Jump in if you need to. I know one of the, one of the things that we went back and forth on, let's see here. The manufacturing uses in your current code are, it just listed, it kind of went on and on. There were a lot of different manufacturing uses. So the biggest thing that we did is we did combine a lot of manufacturing uses into heavy and light. So you'll see in the definition, there's a whole long list of different uses. And we really tried to think about heavy uses being those that would have more impact with noise, dust and, let's see, sound, sound dust. And those are the two main ones, I guess. So the heavier impact uses. And typically your heavy industrial, a lot of times are done more in, are they the ones that are more interior to a building? Or was that light?
That's light.
Light, okay. So heavy can be outdoors, but it's where there's a lot heavier impact. Light industrial is more of your furniture making, your, your lesser impacts on noise and, and dust and, and, and those types of things. They still both would have probably, you know, vehicular, you know, you, you might have large, large vehicles coming and going, delivering supplies and taking, and taking the product off-site. But it's more about the, the day-to-day function of those. So, so that was one of the biggest changes. We did keep manufacturing hazardous slash objectionable. That's in your current code to talk about the truly hazardous kind of materials manufacturing as being a completely separate use. One of the new uses is manufacturing prefabricated buildings. That's a little bit of a combination of a few things. We had quite a few discussions on, you know, applications that have come through the city and how those might fit into a use. And there's a huge need right now, there's a, a lot of manufactured home, not mobile homes, but like your tiny homes or prefab homes. It's a huge new market that's, that's in, coming to the area, already in the area. I think Rachel's even had some inquiries from folks about, you know, is this a use that you could, we could do in Cortez? So trying to think about that as, and the reason that we've isolated that a little bit differently is because we, it doesn't really fall completely in heavy and it doesn't fall completely in light. It's kind of in its own category. And that's how we tried to, that's how we always try to do these use tables, is look at things from a perspective of where are things similar? Where, you know, even in your current existing use table, where, you know, the Ps and Cs line up perfectly on, on five uses and you're going, what's the difference between these? Let's combine them. Where you really truly see a difference, then we can isolate those types of uses. So, so those were probably the, the biggest ones. Yeah, did you have anything to add?
I, I, I think you covered it, Jen. I, some of the specific uses in the current table, for example, heating or air conditioning shop with the graphic are very specific uses that we were then able to combine, as Jen mentioned, for simplification and to, you know, to allow for a, a wider range of uses within, within each of those.
Did we address or define like wood products? Because I think that was definitely one of the issues that got bred up that, one, I mean, that's an, like an economic development perspective, you know, forestry and timber harvesting is, is growing again and something that we kind of encourage in our community. But then there's also the risk too, like we've seen out in the counties, the lack of regulation and, and the cleanup and wildfire risk. And then also just locally when a property owner wanted to, to, to do something around, around wood products and our code was very confusing in how we address that. So I just want to make sure that we, I guess, have clear definitions and if they match what we kind of want for our community.
Yeah, we actually had quite a bit of discussion on that topic. We included lumber mills as part of your heavy manufacturing. So that would be the processing of lumber. And then anything that you're building with wood would be under the prefabricated home or dwelling use. So, so if we need to go any deeper on either of those, we, we went, I think around in 500 circles on exactly how to get those more, you know, clarified a little bit better without isolating that particular use because it does really fall, the, the processing of the lumber. And we looked around to several other codes around Colorado specifically. I looked in Larimer County because they've recently updated their code and they do have a couple of sites I'm familiar with that, that does wood processing. They used to have a log home company also onsite and that's no longer there. So I was trying to figure out their code and how they've applied it to that particular site. But they did lump all of that under heavy manufacturing. And in talking with them, they said that just because of the noise associated with it and the, the truck traffic and different things like that, that it, it always seems to fall more in the heavy manufacturing category.
Okay, like raw material?
Yes, yep, okay.
When you talk about the prefabricated homes or whatever, were they putting it together inside the building or outside?
Outside the building.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, and, and with the prefabricated homes, we've seen a little bit of everything. Sometimes they have a large warehouse that they're building inside because they want temperature control or, you know, condition control. And then I've seen others where they're building outside or they're building portions of the homes outside. You even have like kit homes where there are kits of parts that they're putting together and then they disassemble and take it off-site. So, and, and as you're reading through this, if, I mean, Michaela and I worked really hard on that definition to try to make sure the prehab, prefabricated buildings one was broad enough to encompass a lot of different uses. So if you're reading that and you go, I feel like we're still not quite hitting on something, please let us know.
Is this chapter have like landscaping or is that going to be a, that's site?
That's, that's another chapter. And that's actually one of the things if we do have time, I'd like to talk about a little bit tonight, so.
Okay. Do you guys have any other questions or do, yeah, please? Oh, your microphone, just to make sure you're cut on the.
So under urban agriculture is?
Yes, yep, absolutely.
It's with, under home gardens, right? It's, it's, you've got, now I'm, I'm not advocating or anything, I'm just talking here. But it says marijuana cultivation is not permitted as part of a home garden. Am I wrong in thinking that the Colorado, current Colorado statutes allow people to grow a certain amount for their own use?
Oh, yeah, does that contradict that?
Yeah, let me look at.
I'm on page number seventy, under home garden B, defined A.
Yeah, the state does allow a certain amount of plants to be grown in your own.
But that needs to be secured, right? And, and like a home garden, you know, like I've got a, aren't there, are there different rules for if it's like outside in your backyard though versus in your home?
Sorry, our code does speak to cultivation of recreational marijuana, but it has to be done indoors. And there are some specifics surrounding that. So I think the intent here was that you can, you can have a gar, or this is the definition of what a home garden is. And what falls under this definition does not include marijuana.
So, so to clarify that, that the cultivation would, would apply both commercially and individually in that instance, so it would have to be indoors?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
So the home garden definite is only outdoor gardens, correct? Okay. Do we need to put outdoor in the language to just make it clearer? Does that make sense?
Well, and what happens if you put up a greenhouse? Where does that?
Yeah, and I think we have.
I mean, because it's a structure, you know?
Yeah, I think we have personal, did we have personal and commercial greenhouse? Okay.
Or if it's, if the greenhouse needs to count as the home garden two language, that's something that it's separate from your main dwelling unit?
It says sheds for storage, greenhouses, hoop houses and cold frames. Following accessory uses and structures shall be permitted, subjected to the requirements of the current adopted land use code and building codes. Sheds for storage of tools, greenhouses, hoop houses and cold frames. Okay, so those are permitted. I don't know if you expanded the, the allowance of chicken and bees, but chickens and bees. But I'm glad to see that.
So I, I have one other comment under that.
Absolutely.
Under use standards, home garden two, down at D, it says, all seed fertilizer and animal feed shall be stored in a sealed, rodent-proof container and housed in an enclosed structure. I mean, I'm, those are all great things, but there are a lot of people that aren't going to be doing that.
Right.
And are we going to be sending code enforcement out to check what kind of container your stuff is in? So I, I'm of the opinion, I wouldn't put anything like that in there that we're going to have trouble trying to enforce or, it's a great idea, but.
Yeah, no, great comment, yeah.
And I think that is a great comment, but I do think too with the code, most of this is passively enforced. You know, we don't have the staff to go around and evaluate every single person's property all the time. It's more of like if your neighbor's notices that things are deteriorating or, or don't meet. It's more of like if your neighbor's notices that things are deteriorating or or don't meet the rules, they'll call and then it goes and gets evaluated.
I think, um, just kind of trying to think of maybe the intent of of this line, I'm kind of thinking of like if someone's feeding stray animals or things like that.
Bears.
Yeah, wildlife as well in a neighborhood, so it may be good to have some type of lang- if if that's happening, there can be some enforcement.
I would agree, I just, I hate to see rules or regulations put in that we're not gonna pay attention to. And we do have nuisance ordinances, if, uh, so if something's becoming a nuisance and we're, I think we can go after it that way. I just don't believe we should have paying attention to unless they come up, right? I just think that's a, looking at the world.
And and then add a an undue financial burden too.
Yep. No, good thought, and we we have tried really hard to not, but too much regulation, unnecessary, I guess, regulation. And I really like your term passive enforcement. I like that.
Okay, any other questions or do we wanna move on to module two?
Yeah, if you guys are good.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, so, um, module two, um, is is three chapters. Um, chapter four subdivision standards, there's, there's not a whole lot in that chapter. It's it's a little, it's kind of like what we did with chapter one, just making sure things are phrased well. Um, we've have a couple of, a couple of additions or kind of adjustments in there on drainage and easements specifically that we've been contemplating. Um, and then looking at maybe adding a section on subdivision improvement agreements and then, um, a mechanism for the city to, uh, bond or have letter of credits or something to help, when projects don't quite get completed by the contractor. So those are two new sections that we're working, um, with Patrick on, cause they're very, both of those are very kind of legal heavy, um, sections. Uh, but in chapter five, site development standards, it incorporates, um, parking sidewalks, fences, trees and landscaping. You'll see lighting is is a new, you guys do not have a lighting section right now, signs. And then there's currently some kind of catchall performance standards. And then currently historic preservation sits in your application procedures as kind of more of a process for, um, dedicating landmarks. We have proposed to pull it out into its own section because it it gets kind of buried and lost in there. So highlighting it as its own, um, own chapter, we thought might help that a little bit. Um, so I just wanna kind of go, I'm gonna go through some of these fairly quickly, but in our assessment of the parking standards originally, um, we heard from the community a lot about, you know, are there options to do shared parking? You know, maybe you have a facility that runs, um, I always, churches are a great example, churches and like a retail. So you have a daytime use and a a weekend use. Or maybe you have a daytime use and an evening use that could share parking facilities so that they're not, um, you know, they don't both have to have forty parking spots. They can share the same forty parking spots, um, with an agreement. So we heard a lot about that from public, um, initial public outreach, um, providing some incentives for, um, reduction of parking. And then, um, uh, everyone always asks, you know, do we have enough or too much residential and commercial parking? So that was something that we, um, had tasked ourselves with looking into. There was an identification, especially in the housing, um, housing, uh, action plan to look at reducing, um, the parking, the two parking minimum for, um, residential uses. And I'll go over that in a little bit more detail here in a minute. Interest for in exploring kind of, um, like I said before, reducing that commercial parking requirement. And then looking, looking at noncompliant gravel parking materials. So making sure that all of our surfaces are all weather surfaces and not just, you know, gravel that's put down, but ha- that there's an actual standard, you know, so it doesn't mean you couldn't have a gravel parking lot, but just have a a little bit more elevated standard to make sure that it's it's prepared properly and can be easier maintained over time. Um, and with the housing plan, um, the housing plan did recommend to look at multifamily parking specifically, reducing the minimums to one or one and a half spaces per dwelling unit. Right now, all of your residential unit or residential uses are are pretty much two parking spaces, two off-street parking spaces per unit. Um, so the housing plan had identified that could be one thing that, um, is, uh, even potentially causing a hardship, a financial hardship for for development. Also, the CBD zone, the central business district, uh, there's a provision in there that anything under ten thousand square feet does not have to require parking. I think there's only one building that we're aware of that's over ten thousand square feet. Um, so that means almost all of your, um, you know, uses and 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 buildings in the CBD are, um, exempt from parking, but that one is. So the the suggestion in the housing plan was to remove that cap and just say, we don't need parking downtown, um, off-street parking dedicate. As I said before, this is that language, um, for the CBD zone district. And there's some other kind of strange language that was buried in another place that we pulled out that we've been looking at to make sure that we're not missing a little piece of language that's nestled somewhere else. Landscape standards, um, the whole, that whole section needs some reorganization. It's very hard to read right now and understand kind of a hierarchy of what's important. Tables and graphics would be super helpful in this chapter specifically. There was community interest in having more incentives rather than requirements, um, for say something like low impact development, um, which would be a whole new concept, um, for the city. There's community interest in some better, more defined buffer requirements between residential and commercial uses. And, um, in just looking at some some more recent applications, what we've found is those that were built to the current standards resulted in very little landscaping. So a lot of the commercial buildings that you've seen come in, they're going above and beyond already just on their own because that's a, that's kind of a more, um, standard approach a- across the entire United States. So when you see parking islands and trees and landscaping, a lot of times they're, they're just doing that more because they they feel that it's a a benefit to their business and to, um, a a lot of different benefits, I guess. Um, you know, providing shade and and cooling the soils and and having a nice look for their building. So so when we say the current commercial landscape standards are not yielding satisfactory results, that's what we're saying. A lot of people are actually building above and beyond the standard already. Low impact development, just just for those who may not know what that term means, it's just, um, looking at, you know, ways to limit, um, impervious area and and actually expand the pervious area, um, a way to require or incentivize, uh, ways to require or incentivize that would be to, um, put a percentage of, um, a required percentage or a an incentive to try to reach a certain percentage of pervious area. Let's see, you can have a water wise plant list is another really great way to start to get at low impact development. Things like what you see here, this is a bio swell, so rather than in your parking lot having all the water flow to, you know, the the storm sewer or a detention pond, capturing some of that in like smaller increments is really what low impact development is all about. So, you know, capturing that water in in your parking lot islands or in landscape areas so that it can slow down the water and and it absorbs on the site is just kind of the basic principle of low impact development. A lot of communities are incorporating low impact development in their codes, um, s- communities small and large. Um, and a lot of times they do, um, roll it out slowly as an incentive. So it's not a requirement, it's just if you, um, if you in incorporate low impact development on your site, we can give you an incentive such as, you know, a reduction in parking spaces or something, which is a hard, hard thing to kind of really wrap your head around that, you know, I'm gonna reduce my parking spaces just because I did this. But there's, there's ways to incentivize that, kind of a give and take on the development side. Um, one thing that we have heard quite a bit from the community is providing some sort of landscape buffers. A lot of times we'll do a s- a kind of a tiered system of buffers. So if it's a a lower impact, you know, say you have, you know, a a town home next to a single family home, but you want some sort of buffer between the two, it can be kind of a a lower buffer where there might be a few trees and s- and some smaller shrubs. Um, and then going to the the other extreme where you have maybe a manufacturing use or a higher impact commercial use next to a residential use, going with a a heavier buffer, so maybe it's evergreen trees or fencing and walls, things that really, you know, block that, um, higher intensity use from the lower intensity. Um, and we did hear from our advisory committee, that was one, one of the, um, elements that they were in favor of is is expanding upon the buffering a little bit. The advisory committee was, um, less enticed by the low impact development and and kind of that piece of it, but, so I just wanna, um.
And is this saying that either zone can provide that buffering or is one zone, um?
That's a fabulous question. It would be the higher intensity zone would require, would bring the buffering in. And it wouldn't, it's it's not retroactive, so if you already have a commercial use next to a residential use, there's no, no need. It would be if that, if a new commercial use comes in next to that residential use, then it would be on their, on their property and it would be on their onus to put in that buffer.
So it's tied to the development or reading?
Yes. Yep, absolutely.
Great.
Um, use specific landscape standards currently, there's just one small section about commercial and industrial properties requiring, I think, ten percent landscape on their site. Commercial and industrial or manufacturing operate quite differently. Um, and so one of our recommendations would be to separate those two and have very, very minimal, if any, landscaping on your industrial sites mainly around your office built, you know, your, maybe your, your front office if you have one or if there's a public entrance or something. Unless there's a buffer requirement. But landscaping just for landscaping on an industrial site, um, just seems kind of counter. But a commercial site, a mixed use site, a multi-hostle site, um, we definitely want to, um, encourage you to think about, you know, parking lot landscaping and and, you know, at least some, some standard of landscaping above and beyond just ten percent. So what we've found, uh, very successful is, is kind of identifying the areas that are the most important. So around the entry, maybe it's, you know, so many shrubs or trees per square foot, rather than just, you need ten percent landscaping and it doesn't matter where. So really thinking about where makes most sense on the site to, um, put your money for the landscaping.
And could that buffer be considered part of the landscape?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay.
Um, the mixed use brings up one of the questions. So if we're putting code in about buffering residential from commercial uses, is that only buffering from neighboring residential or neighbor, I guess, neighbor lower, neighboring lower uses? Or how would that apply to a mixed use development? Would you be creating a situation where now you're having to put in weird pockets of trees between a building that doesn't make a whole lot of sense?
That is a fabulous question. I don't know that I've ever had that question in that exact way before. Um, a lot of times mixed use is is a little bit more, um, of a vertical mixed use, so then it's not an issue. But if you do have a large enough site where you have some commercial and residential all mixed in, um, typically I would say there would not need to be buffering unless it was, um, something that the developer wanted to put in to place.
Cause that, that's what I would advocate. The goal is to buffer your existing neighbors, not, not part, not make, not make onerous changes to the way you can develop your property.
I would agree with that. Thanks for bringing that up.
If we could clarify clarify that at all.
Yeah, no, I think that's a great clarification. Yeah, we wouldn't want to prohibit somebody from developing a a wonderful kind of connected site and having to chop it up with buffers, I would think so. Um, and then parking lot landscaping, um, again, we can play around with the numbers on this. A lot of people are putting in, um, requiring, um, trees every ten to fifteen parking spaces, realizing that a lot of your parking lots are rather small, so, you know, that might, that might actually be perfect. You might just end up with trees kind of on the end caps. Um, uh, because when you have fifteen spaces and, you know, if you have uh, fifteen and then fifteen, you know, back to back, you would still just need those two trees rather than having to double up. I don't know if that made sense, but, um, so parking lot landscaping, um, there are a lot of studies out there that say if if you don't landscape anything else, parking lot is the place you really should put your landscaping, especially trees. It cools the the, um, the pavement. There's a lot of, a lot of other ways to cool pavement, you know, you could put, um, covers over parking lots, but I know a lot of people don't. Um, I know there's a lot of discussion about, well, then that's gonna bring birds to the trees and then, you know, all of that. But there is a lot of study out there that this is one, one huge way to just kind of cool down your whole city and and, um, reduce the urban heat island effect. So so we could think about that, um, like I said, we can play with the numbers. Some communities are going one tree every four or five spaces, which is a lot. Or you could, you know, go one for every ten or one every fifteen. We can even do a couple of graphics to kind of represent what that might look like on an existing site and kind of look at what feels like the right balance for Cortez. Um, so I think that's it on landscaping. Um, and I do have some questions about all of these, so I'll just run through lighting and then, uh, we can talk about these. Um, lighting is the other one, I'm not gonna go into a lot of detail on this, but our, our big question is, we've heard kind of both sides of the coin on dark skylighting. Um, some people really, really want dark sky lighting, some people really just don't want any regulation at all. So we want to find a happy m- middle place on lighting. You don't have any regulations right now on lighting, so at the very bare minimum, we would recommend, um, bringing in in place lighting, um, you know, no blinking or flashing lighting and and things like that. Um, the dark sky, uh, lighting, it it's really a spectrum. So full dark sky is when there's, there's no light emitting up into your dark sky. Or into, yeah, the night sky. You can see on here, uh, this graphic shows, um, you know, you can just have all of your light be downward directed. It can be shielded so that it's not only downward directed, but it's also has like a shield around it. So if you're walking by, it's not shining in your eyes. These are a bunch of communities that are dark sky compliant communities. Not necessarily saying you have to go that route, but you may want to start to put in place the foundation for at least lighting regulations. And then over time, maybe it's something you incrementally build upon. Um, and this is just kind of a graphic showing the the benefits of dark skylighting, um, and and what are the biggest components. So you want to make sure the lighting is useful, so for safety, public safety, um, lighting your roadways, targeted, so it's it's directed down, like I was saying, rather than just shining kind of offer or diffuse lighting, it's more directed at at the target. Lower level controlled, so a lot of codes are putting in place, um, requirements to have, either your lights go off at a certain, like, commercial sites, if you're not on the site at night, you know, the light goes off at night. You can use motion detection devices to allow light to come on for safety, but keeping the light levels low. And then looking at light color, um, there's a lot of research that's been done that, um, wildlife can still move freely throughout a community if the color spectrum, and I'm just gonna go to the next one, is down in that amber spectrum. So, um, if you get up into the, the, um, the higher spectrums of light that are brighter and whiter, um, then you're prohibiting a lot of your wildlife, so. Which in some communities, we don't want the wildlife walking through the city, so that's always a balance to think about as well. But on those three topics, on lighting, landscaping and parking, what's the general kind of sense from this group on what level we want to go to on on each of those? Do we, do we want to put some regulations in place? Uh, just wanna kind of hear the the kind of temperature gauge.
I mean, I'm gonna advocate towards more of the dark sky than probably the, um, the rest, but because Mesa Verde and Hoven Weep are both dark sky designation and we're between the two and I'd hate to see our community compromise that. And I think that the bright, um, excessive lighting isn't actually like deter people or keep them safe. You know, I like the i- idea of motion censored. Um, but I think that's gonna be, need to be a conversation, cause I'm sure we all have slightly different opinions on that. But I do want to say these graphics are amazing, cause it's like having that visualization is helpful, I think, for everybody.
I want to touch on one thing before we get into too much on the lighting, cause you you just reminded me of something. Um, there have been a lot of studies done that, um, and I I do have another graphic, I wish I would have thrown this in. Um, one of our colleagues has done a lot of dark style, skylighting. And she has a graphic where, um, it explains this really well, that when you're in a community where, and you guys have all experienced it, you're walking down the street and there's a really bright light, all you can see is that bright light and then you walk away and you've got, you know, kind of light in your eyes. If there was a a perpetrator nearby, now you're compromised because you can't, they're in the dark and you can't see as well. So when you have the lighting, even if your lighting is a lower level, you know, that lower color, it's it's a lot easier on your eyes in in the dark, you know, so if you're walking down the sidewalk, now you can see things in your periphery better. It's just, it's just some studies that have been done, but, um, I thought that was super interesting. She brought that to my attention recently and I thought, I've never really thought about that before, but that that contrast between bright lighting and dark, you know, is worse than kind of having more lighting across the board and bringing that level down so your eyes can adjust at night, um, for. having more lighting across the board and bringing that level down so your eyes can adjust at night for safety.
I think like the biggest concern for our community would be like cost. If they're, that type of lighting is like astronomically more expensive, then that's just not feasible or realistic for our community. And we really have to consider that as well.
Yeah, and the other piece on that is a lot of even your Home Depots, I think even Walmart, a lot of the different department stores are now selling dark sky compliant lighting fixtures even for your home. So it is becoming much more affordable than it used to be. And LED lighting, when, when LED first became so popular, there was a little bit of a push and pull, because even at the lowest light level, they still emit so much light that there was, there's been a, a lot of work on trying to get those to be more dark sky compliant.
Do, do you see communities regulate the lighting differently between commercial and residential?
Oh, that's a great question. No, usually it's across the board. The difference would be a lot of your lighting standards aren't, aren't as applicable to a single family residence. So it's kind of implied that, you know, if, if the whole city's going dark sky, that you should try to respect it at your home too. But a, a lot of smaller communities apply their lighting standards more just to commercial and industrial and multifamily sites.
What would you consider Cortez's lighting right now in a public spectrum? The city of Cortez, what are we putting out?
Oh, that's a great question. I have no idea.
So it'd be really hypocritical? What's good for the goose is good for the gander? Would the city of Cortez have to remove every single light they have to replace it?
I'd have to look around. Do you guys already have downward directed fixtures?
The city, the city of Cortez, all of our lights are dark sky compliant, I'm pretty sure. Yes, yeah. And, and Dennis brings up a good point.
That's a great, yeah. Right.
Now, these are the rules. You all have to change it right now. This is like for future development and then when, like a rebuild goes beyond a certain limit.
Yep.
I really think it would be to our advantage to jump on the dark sky train for many reasons. Like we are surrounded, canyons of the ancients national monument is also a dark sky space. And just like our parks and outdoor area, really unique about Cortez and Montezuma County is our ability to see the stars. And I don't remember the statistic, but it's like, at this point, very few people can see the Milky Way at night. And you can see it sometimes in Cortez and I, I'd like to protect that. And I think that's the way a lot of communities that have our sort of focus are going. And it's an attractant to many people, tourists and other people that are interested in the area.
And I will highlight these, these five, well, at least the first three items on this list, I guess you could say the, the first four. This is what we've put in place in a lot of communities. It, I call it dark sky light. It, it gets you towards dark sky without, you know, so it would be the middle of the spectrum. It would be, you know, looking at maximum of three hundred Kelvin, that's your, your color. A maximum of ten thousand lumens, that's your, the amount of light that's, and then making sure everything is downward directed. If you did those three things and then you could add in the, you know, motion detection or limitations on hours of operation, you'd be getting yourself pretty close to dark sky compliant without going all the way to like full dark sky certification. So just something to consider. If, if you wanted something that was kind of still giving you that dark sky feeling and, and keeping the light levels low and, and all of that, those three very simple things could, could help you kinda get, get halfway there or get part of the way there.
And I just wanna share, like, we, I, I think that's a great idea. It's like move towards that and, you know, but this is also a living, breathing document, that the next set of council members could decide they wanna move away from that. Or we, you know, we hear from the community over the next few months and they feel very strongly one way or another. Like all of that is gonna come into play.
Right. How about landscaping? Were there any of these that you felt very strongly one way or another about?
I do, and sorry if I can just keep jumping in here, but I do like the reduction of landscaping on the industrial zone, because I was part of the previous land use code attempt. And that scared a lot of people, but that was already in our code. It just wasn't being enforced, you know? And like to really think about it as like, why unnecessary landscaping, you know, away from the ability of the, the purpose of industrial. And so I'm glad that like the buffering could count as that. Or like being very specific of like near the building or where people park or where people wanna sit and smoke outside or, yeah.
Yeah, I really like the specificity of this versus like the blanket, like ten percent landscaping. Like it seems like the things just into account what the spaces were and how they're being utilized. And I, I think that's really helpful.
I think one of the things that we're currently seeing, and I think that you brought this up, is with new businesses that come to town, they want to do landscaping and. It's more practical.
Right.
They're not, they're not spending as much money on water. It's a little bit easier to upkeep. And, you know, I think the Ziggy's is a really good example of that. That's a Zurich landscape. Is, is really effective. And so I really support the idea of a plant list that really addresses that and kind of has a spectrum and, and really, you know, says, you know, these are, these are the, the plants that might make the most sense for a new business that's coming in. So I, I would support that part.
Right. Do you guys think it's, one thing that I didn't mention in this, a lot of communities are putting provisions in that regulate the amount of like high water, like, like turf lawn grass. I don't know if you guys wanna quite go that way. I, I mean, we could do the plant list and some of this use specific kind of landscaping might get most of the way there. People are probably less interested in putting lawn in, cause it does take a lot of water, but.
And then our current code, doesn't it say like you have to put lawn in and houses or am I misremembering?
I don't, I don't think it does. No, but there are a lot of old codes that did do that and now everyone's reversing it, but.
Yeah, I'd rather make sure, I don't think we have anything that says that then, but, yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, that brings up a good point of like the Cockins housing. I mean, that's probably a lot of grass. But it does look nice, but I wonder what it costs them to water that, you know? I don't know if we should cap it. I guess sometimes it's like we gotta see what happens, you know, over the next decade and then talk about it. And then I always just lean towards more incentivizing versus like regulating or requiring.
I think our, like watering hour and then now, now we have our new turf replacement program. So, and that's just started up, so I'm really interested to see kinda how that goes and if people really start utilizing it.
Perfect. No, I think that's great. And I think the plant list itself, we can have some alternative turf varieties listed. So people can still be putting turf in, but using a little bit more low, it just encourage, I think it gets to that encouragement. It's, here's a suggestion, you know, this is the way we're trying to encourage people to go. So, yeah.
Yeah, I, I just was gonna second that. I, I think being less prescriptive and more suggestive, I think is beneficial. I think that fits our community a lot more than a huge list of you can't do this, you can't do this, you have to plant this.
Yeah.
I would agree with that. I don't think we're in a regulatory, regulatory position for that. If they wanna pay for grass, they're gonna.
Then go for it.
And we do have the one list that was generated in the turf replacement program. And that might be a, somewhere to base sort of and make, help it grow in order to move in that direction, if we wanted to encourage certain plants.
And then I don't know if you have, Rachel, the, the work from the previous attempt for the land use code? Cause there was a advocacy, I guess gave their expertise on like native landscapes and drought tolerant stuff.
Yeah, I think the list that Councilmember Randall was referring to was a list that was generated from that process of suggested plants that are maybe more drought tolerant. But, yeah, and also there's an opportunity to get a technical assistance grant. Public Works has been working on this with a firm that makes some suggestions of adjustments that you can make to your land use code or, so it's something that we could look into further. Maybe we would put short-term rentals on the top of the list and then that maybe later on.
The other thing I was gonna ask is have you gotten feedback from the community group on, on this, the, the working group? Cause I wanna make sure that we're getting their feedback and not just having council and, council and appointed boards, elected and appointed to make those decisions.
Yeah, we did. I think you guys are going maybe a step above what they had recommended and Dennis, you can weigh in on this. But, but I think the message we did get from the advisory committee was very similar, less regulation, more suggestion. So I don't know, Dennis, if you wanted to weigh in a little bit more?
Yeah, that's exactly what it was.
Yeah.
Can't say any different.
Yeah. We had quite a discussion on the benefits of landscaping, so. I think we kinda got through that and just said, let's, let's have some minimal requirements, enough to, you know, I, I think this use specific and the buffers are the two things that everyone seems to sort of agree upon so far. Like let's just make it a little bit more appropriate for the site, you know, site specific, so. And then parking, I know parking is, is a hard one and we're always looking for new ideas on parking. I mean, when I say we, it's like the whole planning industry. I just read a, an article yesterday, was it? I think on Longmont. Well, the state tried to do some legislation on parking that didn't go through. But Longmont took that and said, okay, we're gonna re, we're gonna eliminate parking minimums. It's all based on alternative parking plans. So there's, everyone's always trying to find some creative solution for parking. There is no silver bullet. No, no city in, in the United States yet has come up with a, wow, this is a, a good answer. We, we all are scratching our heads going, where did these original tables come from? And everyone just borrows from everybody else. So, you know, one space per two hundred square feet, nobody really has any good basis for, for why some of these metrics came about in the first place. So, so we try to just talk to our communities and, and look at it and go, okay, you know, you have a, a small restaurant and, and you know, how much space is really being utilized for, for eating and, you know, for, for folks to come to that restaurant? Now let's look at what's a real logical ratio for, for parking for that. So that's what we have started to try to do and, and we're looking at some adjustments right now. And, you know, since we heard about shared parking and incentives, the two things that we've started to work on some language for is a shared parking provision and also kind of that alternative plan option. So if someone comes in and says, one space per two hundred square feet is just not logical for my site. Okay, we'll do some, some research and some studies and, and bring forward a, an alternative plan that, that proves that you're going to be parking your site. The article I read, and I hear this a lot, is, you know, no business is gonna come in and not provide parking. Like they're, they're gonna wanna make sure that they have adequate parking for people to come to their sites, so. So that's kind of my two cents on that. The, the biggest piece would be the residential and we are proposing studio units to be dropped rather than two to, I think it's one or one and a half spaces, one space. And then the cottage cluster, cottage court kind of situation, reducing the parking on that to like one or one and a half spaces per dwelling unit. So those would be two that we, we could look at. I think a lot of the others, two spaces just kinda makes sense for resi, for a lot of the other residential uses. So any, any thoughts on that one?
I was just gonna ask to be very careful about the addressing non-compliant gravel parking materials, because I don't know that we, particularly in residential areas, we don't wanna just be hardscaping everything.
Right.
And, and if the only option becomes that you can, you can put cement in or you can put in asphalt, that to me seems maybe worse. So I think finding, finding ways to make sure that, that we can have, have soft scape materials for. That are still permeable and still compliant.
I know, I was just thinking the same thing, yeah. Go ahead.
Well, I, I really appreciate the thought that if you cut it down to one to one and a half parking spaces, that you're gonna have more room for housing. I mean, I think that's sort of the driving force behind all this. But in reality, people have cars.
Right.
And so I, I don't want us making a problem later down the road. And that you, I don't want our city streets necessarily clogged outside of multi-use or multifamily dwelling units with just cars backed up on the street. I don't think that's safe. And so I, I get the gist of it, but personally, I think we oughta stick with two, so that's all.
Okay. And I actually think multifamily, we decided to stick to two because of exactly that. Where like we don't wanna put in these multifamily buildings and make the parking lot so small that then everyone's parking everywhere, so.
And I think it's a balance too of like, and like Longmont has buses and.
Right, exactly. Yep.
Way more sidewalks and bike lanes than we do. So it is kind of that balance of like, people do need cars and need to drive here. And our cars are bigger here. Everyone who has trucks and four-wheel drive. But also like if someone can't make enough money because their building is smaller, because they have to add more parking, you know, then that's pressure on the developer. Yeah, so like where is that balance?
Right. I think that's where that alternative parking plan can come in place. Don't adjust the numbers too much. And you come in and say, you know, I'm, I'm selling units to, you know, maybe, maybe that's part of their plan for a, a, the residential structure. I've seen that before where they're specifically, like they're providing car share or different, different things to reduce the need for cars or things like that. So that could be part of their plan is, you know, we're, we're instigating this, that or the other, and that's why we don't need as many spaces.
Do, do we ever count public, public parking spaces as in that calculation? I'm, I'm thinking in areas where, where there's really dedicated parking, like along streets. I'm, I'm trying to think of where, where exactly, basically places where there's like, there's already a bike, there's a road, there's a bike lane and then there's clearly a parking area. To me, in a lot of ways, it doesn't make sense to not count that, because it is dedicate, it is dedicated parking. But I don't know how you codify that.
You can. And I think Michaela and I were talking about that. Was that in the CBD that we were talking about that? Where, when we were looking at the CBD, whether we need, or maybe it was in neighborhood business. I get them all confused when we're talking about it all, but, okay. Where we could require that there's, there's no requirement for parking in a certain area if there's dedicated public parking within a certain distance of the site. And I have seen that before. So we could even, you know, maybe we leave all the parking ratios the same, but say you can reduce your parking, you know, if, if you have public parking nearby, you know, then that's an incentive and a reduction.
And, and right now the code states that the parking must be, in the CBD must be adjacent to the building. So that's an example in, in the CBD where maybe there's a parking lot that's, you know, with a certain, within a certain number of, you know, feet from the building that could be appropriate to, to support that housing unit within the CBD.
Yeah, I like that. I was just gonna say, I really like the scalable option. Like it makes sense to me to keep the two spaces for the multifamily and other things, but to narrow it for other things. And then if, and I really like that idea of adding in like the reality of what's on the ground.
And then also having that option for like the case by case scenario.
Okay. As far as how many trees. I just realized what time it was, so I went, one last opportunity, yeah.
Yeah, I think the trees thing is gonna have to be another conversation, cause like, as much as we say like, oh, that's not necessary. I know we all fight for those shaded spots across town.
I see it all over Colorado. You go into a large parking lot, everyone's supposed to go in the one area. Okay.
Graphics that have the different per spot or whatever requirement.
Okay.
And then do you have a few more slides then?
Um, very, very quick. Let me, I'm gonna skip. Historic preservation is really straightforward. I already kinda talked about that. It's just new chapter adjustments. Next steps, we're finishing, finished drafting module two, so we'll come back to you guys with a, a work session based on what we just talked about landscaping, parking, all of those. We'll, we'll pull it into a draft. And then I think based on this conversation, I think a lot of it, we have good direction on the landscaping. Maybe we'll build the language out and then bring some sample graphics and then we can just kinda plug and play which parameters or metrics feel the best. And then just a little plug about our open. And then just a little plug about our open houses. We have two open houses tomorrow from twelve to two at the Chamber of Commerce and from five to eight here. A lot of the same stuff we went over tonight is, is just open for public discussion. So there won't be any formal presentations. It's just a, an opportunity for folks to come. There'll be different stations for, you know, the zoning kind of station, a use station, and then kind of the landscape parking lighting. And, and we just want to hear from the community what, what everyone else's thoughts are on these topics.
Thank you for hosting those, because I, I want to recognize like the people who are here physically or watching. Please, if you, if you can't come to those, the, the chapters are also available online and comments can be sent.
Yeah, they can be sent directly to me and, and I'll forward them.
Okay. And I would say if anyone has an opinion, please share it with us, because we want to hear all perspectives and take them into consideration.
Great. Thank you guys so much for.
I just wanted to confirm one thing. Even though it's moving into the land use code, the historic preservation will continue to be voluntary and not, not prescriptive. Thank you.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you all so much for coming down here. We really appreciate these sessions. They're, they're just so useful and we're really excited about the work you guys are doing. And thanks for, we feel like you're listening, so.
Oh, thank you so much.
All right, should we move to our regular seats? Because let me, sorry, let me look at the agenda. Does any council have general discussion before, otherwise I can end this meeting and we'll transfer. Okay. All right, we'll end the work session and we'll start our regular meeting.